Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Ridgewood Village Council Public Workshop, October 27th, 2021. The time is 7:31 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board of Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law as scheduled, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perrin.
Here.
Councilwoman Reynolds.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Seiden.
Here.
And Mayor Nudson.
Here. Please join us for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment of silence for our men and women serving our nation and our first responders. With that, we'll go to public comment, not to exceed three minutes per person for total of forty minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Alex Blake. First, I'd like to say thank you to Susan and Lorraine.
May we have your address, please?
Huh?
Your address.
Alex, just your first name, last name, and your address.
It's Alex Blake, 259 West Glen Avenue. I would like to first all start off saying thank you to Susan and Lorraine for listening to concerns from many people that signed the petition in terms of the walkway that's being constructed. I'd like to put on record that I got essentially delivered today the revised plans from Chris. And whenever I first looked at the revised plans, what I would like to put into the record is essentially, this has been an ongoing issue where we've, me, myself, David over here, and some other neighbors have been communicating with Chris, and he has not been communicating back. It's been a struggle trying to get timelines, trying to understand what do we have to get done when, because some of us need to put new water lines in at the same time, so it's more cost effective. Some of us need to move vegetation. Some of us need to do certain items. I get a letter, he's expediting trying to get the work done as soon as possible before winter. I understand he wants to get the work done soon, but giving, providing me fifteen days to basically try to find lawn people to move fifteen trees around of green giants is frankly, I mean, I can ask Matthew over here, the village lawyer, is that even legal to provide me fifteen days to make adjustments based off easement requirements? I'm pretty sure fifteen days is not legally correct, and I think he's saying this against the law, frankly, providing me a fifteen day notification. On top of that, he's been extremely unprofessional in communication. He will not email back, he will not call back. We all leave messages. Fifteen people down the street have called, left messages. Chris does not call back. Chris does not email back because it's inconvenient. He's checked the box. He doesn't want to make changes. He doesn't want to do things that the people frankly living on the street wanted, which thankfully for Susan and Lorraine, they listened to us. They leveled it up to basically make those changes. Obviously, Chris did not listen to us and basically raise those concerns to the proper people.
So Alex, the time is up, but I know you have the documents, and I don't believe that the village attorney is at all familiar with the situation. We can certainly bring him up to speed, I can forward everything to him.
Yes, and I would like him to confirm that, because I think this is illegal, frankly.
Okay.
And I also want to state that I think there's bias, because you can look at this entire documentation, see nothing in red circled for shrubbery to be moved, yet he's mad at me because I've raised these concerns, and he's trying to rip my whole front yard apart.
Alex, let me just, okay.
I know.
I know.
If someone can get me those documents, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, we should have copies of those, right Heather? And we can, and I'll, yeah, yes, that's fine.
Okay.
And I'll bring, I'll bring it.
Am I gonna, okay. I have a feeling I'm not going to completely understand it with this, but I'll take a look at it and, okay, anything I need, I'll ask for it.
Okay. Thank you. You can, you can come on up to.
Hello, David White, 405 North Monroe. I don't want to rehash everything Alex said, but maybe just add a little credibility to, you know, what he's trying to talk through. I'll just say quickly, you know, I did also initiate phone calls and emails and whatnot with Chris, you know, didn't necessarily get the responses that I was hoping for. It's great that we have this now. I'd like to say thank you as well, Mayor. You know, it's just, you know, what do I think? Well, yeah, seeing there's a red part here, I, maybe if I interpret that as tree removal, it would be nice to be able to have a dialogue with the correct folks to understand, you know, do I really interpret this black and white? I don't have to do anything or worry about my vegetation, or should I take action? So it's just that type of, you know, better communication that we're looking for, me and all the neighbors.
Okay. So why not, let's just finish with the other public comment, and then I have a thought on this, so just, if you want, if you're finished, let's have a seat, and then we'll finish with public comment, and I think that maybe we can have a site visit up there, just so, I think that some of this is really complicated for the folks, and they're looking at these plans, they don't really get the whole thing, or I'm sure you get it, I'm not suggesting that you don't get it, but I think that someone has to maybe walk through and be specific, and so I think Lorraine and I would be happy to attend the site visit as well.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you. It's just to have a dialogue about the paper that we have in hand, and that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rorick Hollaby, One Franklin Avenue. By the way, if the mayor is going to engage in a dialogue with public comment, then she should engage with everyone and not say, I cannot answer, because unless someone has been complimentary to you. We have to have a ground rule, either respond to questions or you don't. Now, what I'm here to talk about is Sheddler. As a fifty-two-year-old, fifty-two-year resident of Ridgewood, who's paid taxes over the last fifty-two years, paid taxes in, for, to Bergen County for the same amount of time, and the state, I not ask or request, I demand, demand, a reconciliation of the Sheddler property project. Listening to the comments that were made last time, I'm maybe slow at numbers, it looks like we're making money on Sheddler, which is like a joke, okay? And money coming from the county and the state is money out of my own pocket. I demand to know, and I tell you, you tell, ask our extremely, extremely talented CFO to prepare a paper as to what Sheddler is all about financially, how much was spent, where the money came from, how much needs to be spent. You cannot avoid that, and I demand it. I absolutely demand it as a shareholder, as a, as a, as a resident of the village. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? With that, we will close public comments, and just again, I just want to go back to our residents, and the reason I just responded was because I'm kind of familiar with this complicated situation. It's been a little bit tumultuous, a little bit difficult navigating this, so I get it, and I believe it's probably your first time here commenting at a public meeting, so, but if we can get those documents also circulated, because I don't think I've seen them either. Did you? I'm not sure that we've seen them, so if we can get a copy of those, and then we can look at it. With that, we'll go to the manager's report.
So next Tuesday is the general election. You can vote by mail if you received your vote by mail ballot already. It can either be mailed back by November 2nd, or put into a ballot drop box, which is right here outside of Village Hall lobby. There's in-person early voting, which began on October 23rd, runs through October 31st. You may go to any of the locations, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday. You can vote in person at your polling place on November 2nd, and in addition, you, if you cannot be there on November 2nd, up until 3:00 PM on Monday, November 1st, you can go in person to the county clerk's office in Hackensack and vote in person by mail in, which means they give you the mail-in ballot, you fill it out, they provide you with the ballot, the application, you fill it out, they provide you with the ballot, you mark it up, you put it in an envelope, and hand it right back to them. In the general election is the Board of Education election. Incumbent Sheila Brogan, Christopher Kaufman, Andrew Quach are up for reelection. Susan Madison and Mohammed Mahmoud are also running. There are three available spots for full three-year terms. In addition, there is a village council election to fill the vacancy created by Councilwoman Bernadette Walsh's resignation. Melanie Huban and Paul Vajianos are running for a three-year term, so the balance of that term. Both elections have forums that can be viewed on Channel 33 with FiOS, and they also are archived through YouTube. The village is sponsoring a free mobile shredding event on November 6th at Graydon Pool Parking Lot, 9:00 AM to 12:30, or until the truck is full. This will be held rain or shine. The documents will be securely shredded, no plastic bags or binder clips, and four file boxes per vehicle are permitted. The Ridgewood Farmers Market is held Sundays, 8:30 AM to 2:00 PM. It is located at the train station, and it will run through November. The train station coffee concession reopened earlier this month, but due to lack of customer activity, this service has been suspended and will be reevaluated in January. The Chamber of Commerce is presenting a Halloween parade for kids, parents, grandparents, and friends on Saturday, October 30th, weather permitting, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Memorial Park at Van Ness Square. All are invited, come and meet the Good Witch, and more. Everyone has received their yellow postcard, which indicates the leaf placement dates. Please remember that the dates on the postcard are for when you place the leaves out in the street, along the curb line. Do not place leaves out for pickup past that leaf placement date on the postcard. Instead, wait for your next leaf placement date to put out additional leaves. I just want to remind you, Veterans Day, Thursday, November 11th. Village offices will be closed, there will be no garbage or recycling pickup, and recycling center will also be closed. Please check your relatives' calendars, as the garbage pickup for that week is different than usual. There will also be a Veterans Day service, November 11th at 11:00 AM. Village council upcoming meetings are broadcast live on the village website and Channel 34 FiOS, also available after the meeting, also on YouTube. November 3rd is a village council work session, 7:30. November 10th, village council public meeting at eight o'clock. December 1st, village council public work session at 7:30, and December 8th, village council public meeting at eight o'clock. Mr. Rooney was asked to give information about the money appropriated, spent, and on what, and the grants received for the Sheddler property, and the Zabriskie Sheddler House, and he is here to give a summary of that report.
So we're going to go on to, you want to do that first? Okay, oh, come on, I didn't know we were doing that first. For me, not my usual routine.
We just want to mix it up a little.
I know, I get it, it's fine, it's all good.
So I provided counsel with an analysis of the Sheddler appropriations, the spend through October 15th, and the financing that goes with each ordinance. So on the first page shows the total appropriation for all parties, all, all properties. Improvements in house to be approximately, be seven million dollars. To date, we've spent almost four million dollars, with a balance available of three. The funding has been 4.1 million for bonds and notes, 2.3 million for grants, and a down payment of almost $500,000. That's broken up by appropriations for the field of 1.8 million, property of 3 million, and the house of 2.3 million. The grants, there's prob, there's about eight to nine grants that we've applied for. Everything but the property, I've been able to get documentation for it to validate how much money we'll be getting. Because the property goes back to 2009, I'm still trying to get, go back into the archives and get that information. I do have county resolutions that support the purchase price, but I am challenged with some of the information that we have internally, so that's going to take a little time. In addition to the 2.3 million dollars, we've probably collected about 800,000 so far. Again, some of it is HUD, is Green Acres money, some comes from the trust money, Bergen County Trust. So as it comes in, it's not always clearly identified, so I'm still researching as to the sources of those. The second page, second tab, shows the amount of property taxes that were paid prior to the village acquiring the land, and that was approximately a little over $49,000, going back to 2010, and another piece that we collected, property we acquired in 2014 on Route 17. And the third tab shows a breakdown of how funds have been spent so far for the ordinances. They're broken down by advertising permits, field and land clearance, house construction, hazardous waste, architect costs, financing, and financing costs. And that also shows the breakdown by the house, the land, and the field. Any questions? Nope? We good?
No questions, we appreciate that, thank you.
See you in a little bit.
Okay. With that, we will go to Councilwoman Perrin.
Thank you, Mayor. The Central Business District Advisory Committee met on the 14th, and Chris Rudishauser, the village engineer, joined us, and so people had many questions about snow plowing, about the holiday decorations, because the snowflakes weren't quite as numerous as people would have liked. Also, we discussed cleanup of the tunnel, how can that be done? He explained that the tunnel is historic, it's over 100 years old, and that is the tunnel, the pedestrian tunnel from east to west side of town. We also talked about how to fill the garage with cars and, and people using it more. We also spoke about the importance of grab and go, and that is supposed to start up again November 1st. We also, the last part of the meeting, discussed the fact that the Getty gas station is now closed, and, and the village engineer told us that groundwater cleanup has been ongoing on that property. I also got to sit in on the Library Board of Trustees meeting last night. Thank you, Mayor. I covered for the mayor. And they are looking, they are scheduling their author luncheon for April 6th. They don't have an author yet, but that will be at the Seasons Restaurant. The Library Foundation is still waiting to hear on the second grant that they applied for, and it makes everybody a little anxious, because it's so difficult to plan the repairs and the maintenance that they have to do on the building without knowing what the result of the grant application is. They are also working on renting the second floor of the Pease Library. Let's see. Green Ridgewood held their Styrofoam collection on August, on October 16th, and that was very successful. We had numerous volunteers, and, let's see, we also, the very next day, Green Ridgewood was at the Farmers Market with two cars, electric cars on display. People could get behind the wheel, the kids loved it, there was a lot of discussion, and people just loved coming by to see the cars. We also handed out information about the Eager program, encouraging alternative green energy for Ridgewood. And let's see, we had a meeting of the Sustainable Yards Subcommittee, which is an initiative to educate residents about how they can sustainably maintain their yards. We also had a walk around 20 Pond with the head of Wildscapes and, and Nancy Bigos, the director of Parks and Rec. And let's see, Chamber of Commerce continues with Feed the Frontlines, and they do need drivers, so if you can volunteer to drive some of the meals, that would be great, you can sign up online. And as the village manager mentioned, there is the Halloween celebration, 11 to 2 on Saturday. Glinda the Good Witch does need a wand, so if you can lend a wand, give me a, give me a call. Open Space Committee, we took Barbara Davis and her assistant, who work for the, the Land Conservancy of New Jersey, and who are writing the open space portion of the master plan and the environmental resource inventory. We took them on a tour of all the, well, almost all of the Ridgewood open spaces, and we, they had given us two maps, draft maps of the open spaces, and so at our meeting in the evening, we critiqued what they had given us. Let's see, that's all I have. Thank you.
So before I continue, I just wanted to say that you are very gracious to thank me, but I really am thanking you. We had a little bit of an urgent situation at home, and at the very last minute, I tried to reach out to council colleagues, and Councilwoman Perrin was very quick to say yes, but before she committed, she wants to know if she could wear her sweats to the Library Board of Trustees meeting, and I was, however you are, just get there, so thank you. Councilwoman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. The Planning Board met on October 19th. We had the second public meeting of Phase Two of the master plan. It was a great presentation by Hire Grul, and then the discussion that followed included the circulation element, downtown economic development element, and the green building environmental sustainability element. If you didn't see it when it was live, I highly recommend that everybody watch it. You can go to www.ridgewoodvillage, M as in master, P as in plan, dot org. And if you sign up for their website, they're doing a weekly poll with a question every week. You'll get an email every week with the question, and you can respond. This week's question is, what new business or activity would you like to see in the downtown? They will be doing the weekly questions through November, so this is a great opportunity for everybody to participate in what you think the, the village should look like in our future. So please do participate, if you can. From now through January, Hire Grul is going to be developing the text for each of the elements they discussed in the first two meetings. The next meeting will be January 18th, 2022, where they'll have the draft review, and we'll be discussing it, possibly making revisions, and we will be looking to adopt this in March of 2022. We also had a discussion of the amendment, of the amended H-zone amendment, which we'll be introducing at, tonight, at our special public meeting. The Citizen Safety Advisory Committee met on October 21st. The issue with finding crossing guards is improving greatly. All crossing guard posts are now staffed except for Ridge School. The West Glen Avenue sidewalk construction is scheduled for the end of October now, and November. The layout is underway. Some neighbors came and expressed their displeasure, not only with the four-foot-wide tree planting strip between the sidewalk and the curb, but also in the overall process, they were very unhappy about it, and you heard that at public comment tonight. I believe it was decided that the grass strip will be eliminated, and that the sidewalk will abut right to the curb, so that's good news for the neighbors. The West Glen Avenue, North Monroe, street signal upgrade is being coordinated with the Signal Division, and this will be done along with the sidewalk work. The pedestrian actuated crossing signal at West Glen and Hillcrest Road has been ordered, but in the meantime, yield to pedestrian signs have been added. North Irving Street parking is reported to still be a problem with illegal parking and safety issues, particularly during recreational events. Added enforcement was encouraged, and the benefits of a parking map was discussed. We'll be reaching out to the Board of Ed to see how they feel about that, and it's possible, and the sports groups, it's possible, we, they could be creating a map for visitors of Ridgewood to show where you can and cannot park, because it seems like a lot of the illegal parking are from other resident, other people coming in to see a game, and parking where they don't know that they're not supposed to park. The next meeting for citizen safety will be November 18th. That's it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Center Advisory Board will meet tomorrow at 5:00 PM downstairs in the Annie Zoucy Youth Center. There's an update later on in the agenda about the downtown tree wells, and that's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of items, just to tag on to the Planning Board meeting, it's really a wonderful opportunity for everyone to get involved and participate in planning for the future of the village of Ridgewood, not now, not five years from now, but we're talking ten, twenty, thirty, fifty years from now, the village that we envision for future generations. So we really encourage everyone, our, is it ridgewoodvillagemp.org, and every week, we post a survey question, so please visit, answer the question, participate, be a part of the future. Hopefully, we'll leave a wonderful, sustainable community for future generations to enjoy. We have Historic Preservation Commission met a week and a half ago, which was really exciting, is the first time that HPC has met since, I guess, January of 2020, as the pandemic was setting in, so it was really a wonderful evening. We had multiple applications. We had multiple applications, just, we had one old home that's going to have an addition, so that home owner is willing to match all the appropriate sightings, add the appropriate windows, so it's going to be a beautiful addition. We had several businesses with their applications for signage, World Platts, the beauty salon shop, and one of the restaurants with a, an exterior vestibule. So it was really a good meeting, and Joe Saplicky and will be continuing on as chairman, and Barbara Frante will be vice chair. So, and I thank everyone Historic Preservation Commission members for their patience as we work to get that reorganized. And finally, my last item was Friday evening, I attended the Blue Star Dinner event, which is always a really important evening in town. The event honors and recognizes the families with, family members with individuals serving in, serving our nation in the armed forces. We had quite a number of families attending, and each one had the opportunity to speak about their family member serving our nation. I got to serve everyone their dinner, which is important, and then we watched a video, a little slideshow of our residents who are overseas or somewhere serving in the United States, wherever they're stationed, and it really gave a window into what they experience every single day of their lives in, as serving, and really just a number of different branches of the military, including, is it the Space?
Space Force.
The Space Force, yes. So we even got to go over someone with the Space Force. So it was a very exciting evening. We want to thank American Legion Commander Bob Paoli-Lu Francis, and especially the families and those individuals that are serving our nation. We should think about them every single day of our lives. We should stop and think about every individual serving our country, their selfless sacrifice in service to all of us. So thank you to the American Legion. And with that, I just want to turn the floor over to the village attorney for a moment, Matt Rogers.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I asked the mayor if I could have some time at this point. I apologize, first of all, for taking up time in the meeting, but I think there's something that I needed to address compared to whatever, all our items we're trying to take care of tonight. I kind of think that this is trivial, but it reflects on me, also reflects on the council, our CFO and our manager. A former council member, Jeff Voight, wrote a letter to the editor, which he sent over to Tap into Ridgewood, giving inaccurate and misleading information about me, my salary, my compensation, and the work that I've done for the village. It reflects on the village and on everyone involved because of what was said in the, in the letter. Then somebody picked up the information in that letter and used it in a, a posting on Facebook. I don't normally get on social media, but somebody pointed it out to me. And this is really the problem with regard to social media and giving out misinformation, which is that people pick up on it and they take it as truth or take it as fact. And I was willing to let those go, but then I heard that Jeff Voight then went to the League of Women Voters last week, talking about this and saying, seeking, I believe, and I wasn't there, but believe, an investigation into this. And I, I just need to put it, try and put an end to it, or at least, I don't know if there's going to be an input, an end put to it, but just at least get the truth out as to what went on. And why don't I just start with the compensation issue? In the letter, Jeff says that, "I have adjusted my salary with the village to a annual stipend where I'm making $304,000 a year." Nothing could be further from the truth. He said that I gave myself a $58,000 increase. I don't know where that number came from. He says I made $248,000 last year. I don't know where that number came from. And this all has to do with, as of July 1, I've no longer going to be billing the village, but I went on a annual salary or an annual fee. I represent another municipality in Burton County, and I do that exact same thing with that municipality. It's something they've been doing for years, probably 40 years. At least my predecessor was there for 40 years, and he had been doing it as a stipend for a long time. So in April and March of this past year, knowing that the 2021 budget was going to be something where the revenues were low due to COVID, and there were struggles with regard to trying to make sure we kept the tax rate down, I approached Bob Rooney and Heather about my salary, my compensation, to try and work out some type of a situation, I think that was a win and a, and a good positive thing for the village. I've been aware that all the village managers that I've worked with over the years, whether it be Jim Tenhoe, Ken Gabbert, but more particularly with Roberta Sonnenfeld and Heather, that they've been keenly aware, and at the forefront of their thoughts are always when they do the work for the village, what's the impact of running this village financially on the resident and the taxpayer? And so there are times when, in work that I do for the village, that I'm brought in at a certain point in time where I always thought, maybe I should have been brought in earlier. And obvious, obviously, the concern was for making sure that there weren't excessive fees brought in, weren't, things were done on a, on an economically efficient basis. And I was certainly keen to that, certainly sensitive to it. And I was also aware that, you know, everybody should be aware that I'm not asked to get involved in something. I mean, I don't do work if I'm not asked to get involved, and I don't generate work for the village or the other municipality that I work for. I'm given work. And so when I'm given work, I would bill for it and submit those bills at the, at the end of each month. And I thought that maybe we could do something better for the village by doing it this way. So with knowing that, there were times when I thought I should have been involved in work, and there was always worry and concern about bills, I offered a situation where I would get an annual salary, and you could give me any amount of work, anything that you wanted me to do, it wouldn't change the salary. And it would give Bob Rooney a, or the CFO, whoever that may be in the years to come, a set number for what I do, so they knew where I was going to go. And in order to make this work, I took less than what I'd been taking or getting over the last number of years. There was no increase. There was no 304,000. In fact, it's much below that. It's below 200,000, which is what I offered. And after discussions with Bob and Heather and the council, we decided pretty much that it was a win for the, for the village in regard to that. You know, the, the issue really was, is where did he get this 304,000 number that was in his letter? In the 2021 budget, there's a line item for village attorney, and the amount of 304,000 is put there as Bob Rooney's estimate of what all the legal fees for all the legal representation that's going on in the village may cost the village for this coming year. So in 2021, the number was 304,000. That covers labor attorney, bond attorney, any specially appointed attorneys, and me. It's not just me, it's all of the attorneys, all the legal work that's involved in the village. The funny thing is, and the interesting thing is, is that in 2020, when Jeff was on the council, the same line item and the same number, 304,000, was in the budget. He approved it. He voted on it in favor of it. The, there were, and I don't recall any questions being asked about it, but that line item, village attorney, always included all the attorneys that do work for the town. That same line item was in the 2019 budget, the 2018 budget, and the 2017 budget, all of which Jeff voted on when he was a council member. Unless he didn't understand what that line item was, or unless he thought that I was making a greater amount than I really was, but he's accessed all my bills for the last number of years through Oprah, it's a misrepresentation of what I'm compensating, what I'm compensated for and what I get as a village attorney. You'll see that in the 2022 budget, and I talked to Bob about this, there should be a reduction in that line item for village attorney because of the arrangement that we made with getting an annual fee instead of billing. And again, the whole purpose was, is so that nobody's got to worry about giving me work, getting me involved in legal matters before they start incurring fees. They can give me whatever they want, and they'll work on it and do it, and we worked it out so that it was much, it was at least, well, first of all, it was at least, Bob can correct me on the percentages, but it's at least 5% less than what I got in 2020, and, or 7, 7.5% less than what I got in 2020, and, you know, 20-something else percent less than the 304,000 that, not 20-something, but almost 40,000, 40% less than what I was getting if I was going to get 304,000. So like this, you can ask yourself whether or not this just was a mistaken misrepresentation or something that was meant to be intentional. And you can decide for yourselves. I'm not going to help you decide that, although I do have my own opinion. The letter also says that in the past, my billing has been questionable. He cites two items. One is the one-vote litigation as being questionable, and the other one is a nonprofit where he says that it has nothing to do with the village. Let's start with one vote first. The way he writes his letter, he basically insinuates or tries to direct people to think that I received $50,000 for legal fees in that case. And actually, my billings were less than $6,000 in that case. What's questionable, and he doesn't bring up, is that, and I know he's aware of this, is that after October, I stopped billing on the case. The case went through to February before it was resolved by the courts. There was still work that I needed to do, and I did on it, but it didn't build a village for November, December, January, or February. And that was also a decision I made to keep costs down. With regard to the nonprofit, he says that it had nothing to do with the village. Well, while he was on the council, the council was approached by the village ad hoc committees, the different committees that are set up to do programs and perform certain aspects of village help to help residents, the, the community advance. And they said they wanted to get, figure out a way to get funding to promote their purposes, or the purposes of their committee. It was discussed by the village, it was discussed in open session, and the village asked me to find out what it was, whether or not there was a legal way to do this. I did the research on it, and I advised the council that you could set up a, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit could be set up, but the village council or its staff could not run the nonprofit. They couldn't be involved in it at all. And in that regard, I did the work that they asked me to do, and I billed for it. I don't know if there's something I'm not supposed to bill for, but that nonprofit certainly had something to do with the village. Then he took the same inaccurate information and brought it to the League of Women Voters last week, bringing in a, a third issue, which is commenting that I should not be charging the village or should not have charged the village to work on all the Oprahs that he has filed in the village. And whenever anything, whenever any matter gets involved with an Oprah request, and they're asking for emails or information concerning communication, it has to be reviewed, excuse me, has to be reviewed for personal information and confidential information. And I often get asked to do that on behalf of the village. It's work that I do, and it's part of what a village attorney does, or a borough attorney does. The other thing that he fails to mention is that I had to defend Donna Jackson in six complaints that Jeff filed against her at the, at the Government Recordance Council. I had never done any of these before, because I've never had to do it before, but there were six complaints that he filed against Donna Jackson in regard to responses to his Oprah requests, and they needed responses and answers along with documentation, and I billed for that. So I think everybody should know that the, the issues that have been brought up in this letter and in subsequent actions, which I feel needed to be addressed, really came from a, a different source or a different reason or cause. You know, one of the troubling starts of social media is that it's easy to write, it's easy to hide behind facts, and it's, it's easy for somebody else to latch on, latch on to them. And much of what goes on in this country now, if you say it enough, people begin to believe it. And I was willing to let the early ones go, but once it started getting involved the way that he was involving it, I felt I had to respond. And with that, I'll, you know, at some point, I'll leave myself for any questions, not tonight, because we've got a, a full agenda. But if anybody has any questions about it, they certainly can ask me at any time. And thank you, Mayor, for the, for this.
So before we continue, I just want to see if any of my council colleagues would like to respond or not.
Sure.
I, I think Pam's.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Councilwoman Perrin, thank you.
We have many complex issues that come before us, and I thoroughly appreciate Matt Rogers' help in understanding the issues. And for that re, and, and I did find that I was holding back in asking him questions when, when I knew that, you know, it would be billing every six minutes. Under the new arrangement, I have much more accessibility, and I feel that I can call him with my questions much more readily. And so, so far, I am liking this arrangement, and I think it is to the residents' benefit.
Oh, yeah. Matt, can we go after him legally for, for any of this? Or how about the newspapers or websites? Because he's really been printing lies in letters to the editor that have obviously not been fact-checked at all for years.
I don't, I don't purport that that's the way to go with this thing, and I think everybody's got to know that once you're a public official or in the public eye, doing public service, you lend yourself out there for criticism that would not normally be available or pointed at an individual. And, you know, I think if this was to put an end to it, better off, I have a feeling it's not, but I don't, I wouldn't at all think or suggest that legal action should be taken. Sorry, Mike.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Thank you. Yes, I just want to repeat what Councilwoman Perrin said. I'm so happy with this arrangement. It's definitely saved the village a lot of money. And if I have a question about anything, I don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call Matt, which prior to this, I did. I'm like, ah, it's going to cost us money, blah, blah, blah. But Matt, I appreciate all your service for all the years, and hopefully, you will be the village attorney for many years to come. And I hope this incident, I mean, it's just, it's, social media is just getting out of control, and it's, it's a shame. And hopefully, people will learn a lesson.
Thanks.
So I'll add my two cents. I'm actually ashamed of our residents and a former councilman who engaged in this. I'm ashamed. I know Matt for decades. I know Matt for a long time. This is an upstanding citizen. He is a wonderful village attorney. He's a friend, he's a friend to everyone. And to be treated like this, to have his reputation questioned or smeared by a former councilman who clearly didn't understand the very budgets he voted on repeatedly when he sat up here on the dais, is an astonishingly egregious act on his part. It is unconscionable what he has done. I have read letter after letter after letter, printed by the Ridgewood News, Tap Into, and everywhere else where it becomes clear, even on another matter, and I believe it was with the hiring of additional staff in the clerk's office, which Mr. Voight stated occurred this year, or this past budget, when he wasn't on village council. But in fact, he had voted on that very budget with those hires a year and a half, two years ago, on his last budget that he voted on. So when I also read comments on Facebook, I read comments on Facebook about the village attorney converting his, his contract to a hundred-plus-thousand-dollar raise. I read that the village council didn't support the library in their grant application, and, and I don't remember the rest. And when I responded to each one of those, point by point with factual information, a matter of public record, and for the record, this village council, a former village council, as a result of our due diligence with the library grant application, I believe we saved close to $500,000 on a shared service. So the fact that these comments that are being regurgitated onto social media as a result of a former councilman's misinformation, or whatever his, his issues are, result of a former councilman's misinformation or whatever his issues are, and especially going after our esteemed village attorney. When I corrected it, I was told that my factual information, verifiable by public record, might be someone else's truth. It is someone else's truth. It's not someone else's truth. It's fact. And the fact is, we have a wonderful, outstanding village attorney. We're grateful for his service to our community for a very, very, very long time. He is a friend to many in the village, and he has served us all well. Thank you, Matt, and we appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. With that, we'll move on.
Okay. Our first discussion item is on under operations. It's the ordinance for the hospital zone development regulations. I know Mayor Newtonson and Mr. Rogers have both worked on this, so.
So let me, I'll just start on that. We had, we've been a little back and forth with this with our planner on the H-zone regulations. Everybody's had a chance to review it. The planning board has also reviewed it. I know that Jonathan Drell and Robin Goldfish are here, so they attended our planning board meetings. They're up to speed on all of this, and we're, I think we're in a really good place. But I do think that, Matt, you want to jump in on the site plan?
Yeah.
I think, does Jonathan, I think, are you?
I'd like Jonathan to come up.
Okay, good, okay.
I think before we just do this, Jonathan wants to. Okay, there are kind of two issues that are presented, and everybody's got to understand that not only do we have, not only do we deal with this from the standpoint of our fair share litigation, our affordable housing litigation, but also from the standpoint of the litigation that involve the expansion of Valley Hospital. So the remaining point, two points are, one has to do with the power plant, the other one has to do with recognition in paragraph two of the settlement agreement that any interior and exterior changes to the site can be permitted as long as no additional square footage, height and/or, you know, I would also say encroachments, and no other bulk requirements are not changed. So what I'm suggesting is that we amend the ordinance as written right now before it gets introduced to include under section E, a number eight, that recognizes interior/exterior changes to the facility can be made as long as, and I have it written down so I can read it in the record when we vote on it, as long as no additional square footage, height, or encroachments occur. And the other issue with the power plant, the power plant's also covered in the settlement agreement. And the power plant, the issue with the power plant is that in terms of planning, a power plant, particularly for a hospital, is a regulated activity. And there are DEP guidelines, there's also other guidelines that might come in from the Department of Health with regard to it, I'm not sure, but certainly DEP guidelines with regard to dealing with such things as exhaust and other things that may change the size of the facility as the regulations change. So the settlement document states that if and when this comes about, that there is going to be the need of a site plan. So basically, we recognize that there may be a need for a change in the power plant. We can't identify exactly what those parameters are in terms of how big or how small or what size of the stack is going to be, but when that happens, we're going to be, the planning board and the village council will see it too. We'll see if a site plan application coming in from Valley Hospital with regard to that. That's required by the settlement agreement. I've talked to Mr. Drell about this. I don't believe that needs to be put into the ordinance. I think he's in agreement with that. Correct. And I think we're, we're fine with the one amendment with regard to the exterior and interior changes. That's Jonathan Drell.
Do you have anything, Jonathan?
And Matt, your outstanding attorney is correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And, and other than that, it basically, so everybody knows the concept, is that with regard to the settlement on the expansion lawsuit, Valley Hospital is permitted to conduct healthcare services as we enumerate them in the ordinance on the site, on the present facility, and that all the buildings that are there right now are deemed conforming so that if there's any interior, exterior changes that don't increase any of the height, square footage, or the encroachments, they can do so just strictly on either building permits or site plan or whatever without having to get variance relief. And that was the idea behind that in the settlement, so.
Do you have anything else to offer, Tom?
Nope.
Robin, you're good? All right.
We're good.
Okay. So we'll do this in one more minute, so you're good.
Okay. The next item is under policy. It's a human resources manual. Every two years, we are required, under the municipal excess liability, join insurance fund to update our human resources manual. They actually extended it an additional year due to COVID. What I do want to say is they hired a labor law attorney to overhaul and revamp the entire human resources manual. That 90 to 95% of the manual is required under the joint insurance fund, and then there are some things that pertain specifically to Ridgewood, such as our most recently adopted social media policy, which is part of it. So we do need to adopt it so that we can continue to get our reduction in our premium. And so this was presented to the council a bit late. It took longer than I expected to update, but it is updated, and we will be distributing it to our employees sometime in November, so.
Any questions on that?
Just one question. That's under review by Dominic Braddy.
Yes, yes. Our labor attorney is reviewing it. He'll be done, and then it will be, you know, published as he sees fit. But I don't think he'll have too many changes in that, you know, a labor attorney created it, and the JIF has also blessed us, the joint insurance fund, so.
But we're going to approve it tonight.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay. We'll take a motion to adjourn a special public, motion to, I'm sorry, motion to suspend and convene a special public meeting, sorry.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to post?
Nope. Okay. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Village Council, Village of Ridgewood, Special Public Meeting, October 27, 2021. The time is 8:27 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by the law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Perrin?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Seaton?
Here.
And Newtonson?
Here. Okay. I move the first reading of ordinance 3878, I guess, as amended? No, we're not.
We don't have to do amended because he's already stated.
All right, okay, fine. Got it. Okay. Got it. Thank you. Okay. Now I'll move the first reading of ordinance 3878.
Second.
Wait, hang on. Are we good?
Yeah, we're good. As long as everybody remembers that the amendment, as I just spoke before during a work session, is the amendment to section E8.
Okay, got it. All right. Everybody's good? Okay, so Lorraine, second.
Shall I read the title?
No, you have to do roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Newtonson.
Yes. So will the clerk please read ordinance 3878 by title?
An ordinance by the village council of the Village of Ridgewood, amending chapter 190, land use and development of the code of the Village of Ridgewood.
I move that ordinance 3878 be adopted as amended on first reading, and that December 8, 2021, be fixed as a date for the hearing thereon.
Second.
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
Newtonson?
Yes. You want a resolution?
Do you want it adopted by consent, or do you just want to have it written full?
I think we're, I'm good with consent. Is everybody good with consent?
Okay. 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 So the following resolution, 21D323, approve, approve, human resources manual update is up for adoption on a consent agenda.
May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Perrin?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Seaton?
Yes.
And Newtonson?
Yes. Okay. With that, we'll have a motion to adjourn a special public meeting and reconvene our work session. Somebody?
So move.
Mike?
Mike?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Anyone opposed?
Our first discussion item is the Ridgewood Water Ward Bid Servicing Repair of Potable Water Pumping Facilities. We received bids. There were three bids picked up and one bid was received. It is a unit price service for various repairs and replacements on the water system supply, treatment, and distribution equipment contained within the wellhouses, transfer stations, treatment buildings, and booster stations. The basis of the award is being made on the total that was calculated based on the hourly rate submitted for each task. The calculated bid tabulation is $244,940. The previous years, the previous two years was $237,840. Therefore, Mr. Calby is recommending the award to the sole responsible bidder, William Stadoff Company, Inc. of Flemington, New Jersey, funds are in the water utility operating budget in 2022, and this is subsequent to the village council adopting a 2022 budget to fund the full amount.
Questions, anyone?
Yeah. Is it a two-year contract?
It's the first year of a two-year contract.
That's why it's not to exceed $500,000?
Yeah.
It's correct. But why don't you come up?
You're good, Rich? Okay?
Good evening. The $500,000 is per year, so it'll be awarded every year of the service contract.
I don't understand why that's necessary if the tabulation was $244,940.
So the unit, it's a unit price bid, so there's a variety of items, service hours, equipment. We create a calculation. That way, we could identify a low bidder, make an assumption based on past work on what we might utilize out of the contract. But of late, we've been doing a lot of work on the wells, and that's why we're budgeting it $500,000 not to exceed for next year, assumption that we're going to do more than what that tabulation is.
Thank you.
The next item is servicing and repairing of electric source. Ridgewood Water went out for bid. They received, three bid specs were picked up, two bids were received. One bidder actually did not comply with the bid instructions and therefore was disqualified. So the sole bidder remaining was Venora Electric, Inc. of Hackensack, New Jersey. The tabulated pricing for the years 2020 and 2021 was $107.22 an hour. 2022 and 2023 is $110.37 an hour, 110.37. This, again, is in the water utility operating budget, and it's contingent upon the council adopting a 2022 budget to fund the full amount of the contract.
Any questions, anyone?
No questions.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. We're in a meeting, so you have to wait until the end of the meeting, and then you can ask.
I was wondering about the seven days in the meeting.
Okay. You just, at the end of the meeting, we're just in the middle of a meeting, sorry. It's just a rule, sorry. Okay. We're just, we're just in the middle of business right now. But you're welcome to at the end of the meeting, it's fine. All right, go ahead.
So, so this is a two-year contract, right?
But it's awarded on a yearly basis. So this time next year, I'll be back and funding award to 2023.
And is it not to exceed $250,000 each year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
You're good, Pam?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is awarding National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract for security. The new Ridgewood Water facility at 111 North Maple Avenue requires security consisting of security cameras and door access controls. The installation of these devices is not included in the construction contract for the facility. The Genetek system has been chosen so that it can be integrated into the existing village access system throughout Village Hall and other locations. It, the, it's under the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract. It would be awarded to SecureWatch 24 of Munaki, New Jersey, in the amount not to exceed Funding is in the water department capital budget in various account numbers.
Anyone questions? I actually do have a question because I know, I think we had some SecureWatch cameras that really weren't clear, and I know we had them in other locations, so I just want to make sure that we're not going to be in a situation again where we have to install this and then change out camera heads and lenses and have an additional clause that was unanticipated.
I'm going to speak to Sergeant Chuck just to confirm what the experience has been. I'll do that before your next meeting. The issue we're running into, the village is kind of married to this Genetek system, particularly for the car reading services, not necessarily cameras. We could remove those if we had to. And I tried to incorporate it within the contract of the building, but they don't have the license. SecureWatch carries the license. But I'll definitely check on the camera quality, make sure that if it's not going to be what we need, we'll remove that part out of it and hire a different company.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I see the contract says that this contractor is not responsible for cabling the system. Would we be doing that in-house, or will we have another contractor to do the cabling?
In the current general contract for the building, they're running the conduit and cabling for the cameras.
Okay. You're good, Pam?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. The next item is additional award for by two minutes concrete plus various road repair materials. We went out for bid in February, and a service contract was awarded to Brainstone Industries of Hale, New Jersey, for an initial amount not to exceed $70,000. And it was purchased through the Bergen County Cooperative Purchasing Program. At this time, an additional $50,000 is required for additional services, none anticipated. This is due to main break repairs, valve hydrants, and other system repairs. It wasn't anticipated at the time of the original award. So again, the change, the additional amount is to the same contractor, Brainstone Industries, in an amount of $50,000, and the funding is in the water utility operating budget.
Anyone questions?
Yes. This is a change order for more than half the value of what we had contracted for before, and I guess my question is, how many water main breaks did we have?
No. This overage is the direct result of the work we did on Lakeview Drive. We didn't anticipate at the beginning of the year, only awarded the initial contract that we're going to replace that entire main. When we found out the village engineering department was going to pave the road, we decided to go in and replace the entire main. So all that stone and paving caused the overage. This was a non-bid contract, it's a cooperative. So at the beginning each year, we make an estimate of what we're going to utilize, and often we have to do an additional award based on what happens throughout the year.
Thank you.
That was a huge job.
Yes. It took all summer to complete.
Yeah. I mean, it was a big job, so.
Okay. We'll move on to parking. Thank you, Mr. Calby. The parking permits for 2022, Mr. Rooney and I have discussed and have come up with the recommendation that we should have the prices remain the same. As a reminder, it's $1,325 for village residents, which will allow them to park on the second and third floors of the garage, in the train station, cottage, place, and park and ride lots. The $1,000 resident permit is for the garage, cottage, place, and park and ride, and then there is a $1,000 non-resident park and ride permit as well. They can also, residents can also park. They can also, residents can also park at the train station by paying Park Mobile or the kiosk. They receive a free train station permit to prove they're a resident. Also, our central business district permit is $30 for the annual sticker. The hang tags, monthly hang tags are $105 per month, $52.50 if it's purchased the sixteenth of the month forward. It allows them to park on the fourth floor of the garage and the Walnut Street lot. The one-day parking pass will remain the same. We recently increased that. We are speaking with Sergeant Chuck. There is a bit of a challenge because of people commuting into the city less often. So they may be in two or three days a week. They're doing the one-day pass. One thing is they do have to still have that train station permit sticker, so we have to make sure to make that clear. In addition, they're tending to park in the Prospect and Chestnut Street lots, which we, we moved all commuter parking from there. So after speaking with Sergeant Chuck, we'll come back with a recommendation as to what we think should be done, where we should have the people with the one-day parking passes park, perhaps in the garage and in the train station lot, but we'll see what he's recommending as well. So we'll come back with that recommendation probably, hopefully, at next week's meeting.
Okay. Anyone questions? We're good?
I just had a thought. I mean, I don't know, do we have any idea how many people are going to be using the garage in 2022? Is there any reason why we can't open it up to non-residents to fill some spaces?
I'm good with that. I just read on, speaking of social media, that everyone's heading, they're actually asking about where they can park now, folks, because they're starting to all head back permanently into the city. So, but I agree. I think, you know, we should probably tap that as another resource.
Okay, so my question for you then is, would you want to charge more for a non-resident parking permit than a resident parking permit? We did not do so for the remainder of this year, but I don't know if you wanted to charge more. Normally, we do. We cannot do so at the park-and-ride because it's a state facility, but we had in the past charged more for non-resident parking permits.
What was the difference? Was it $200?
It was, that was a lot.
I don't remember.
And I'm not saying it necessarily needs to be as much of a difference as it was before, but it's just something that I guess we need some guidance on because if we're going to do that, then we do need to change the ordinance in November to adopt in December.
Do we know how many, we actually, parking utility? Let's find out how many we, how many did we do this year? Can Bob come up? No, you don't know. He doesn't know off the top of his head.
I probably, I probably have it if I can look it up.
Okay, you can't, you can't, all right. Let me just, let me, I know, just take it, okay. Mr. Halaby, just relax. Alex, honestly, we, we're in a public, we're in a meeting. No, I know, but you can't call out in a meeting. You have to just wait until the end when there's comment, public comment. So just relax. There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting to come to the microphone and speak, okay?
I'll, I'll provide that information to you and also, you know, just check with Sergeant Chuck as to what, you know, the PEO is seeing out there as to, you know, amount of the garage that's being used. And I do know that the train station's starting to be used a little bit more than it was.
Yeah.
I can't say a lot, but at least a little bit, so that's a good sign. Any other comments about the, keeping the amounts the same going forward? No?
I just, I mean, we need to fill the garage.
Right.
Whatever we need to do, you know.
I mean, we could go into this year on a, you know, first come, first served, or we could say the first month is open to Ridgewood residents, and after that, anybody, to open it to anybody at the same price. And this way, you give everybody in residence first dibs, and then, I mean, I don't know if that makes sense to anyone.
Through January, is what you're saying? Through the month of January?
Yeah, to say Ridgewood didn't open it up in February to anyone at the same price, which is fine, too.
Okay, okay.
Pro-rated, right?
Yeah, it's always pro-rated. It's always pro-rated.
Yeah.
Correct.
Exactly.
Based on the month purchased.
Right. So let's do that.
Okay, so this time I'm going to have Bob Rooney, our CFO, and Bud Jones, who's our auditor, come up from Nissabatcha, and have them talk about the 2020 audit and the corrective action plan.
So we are joined tonight by Bud Jones, who's the partner on the village audit. I've known Bud for many years, and I'd like to offer congratulations to him tonight. He has been elected as the managing partner of Nissabatcha, so we are.
Oh, congratulations. Very nice.
I'm told I'm not all that bright.
So Bud's going to say a few words about the audit and, you know, give some highlights, and we'll move on from there.
Good evening. On page 58 of the audit report is the comparative statement of operations and change in fund balance. The village had a total of $170 million in revenue, expenses of about $167 million, and also had adjustments for COVID special emergency of about almost $1.4 million, all of which resulted in a net increase in fund balance of about $300,000. And obviously, that's, that's related to COVID. Revenues were down significantly, recreation fees, interest, many miscellaneous revenues. And by the actions that the village took during 2020, you're able to actually keep your fund balance stable by, by taking these special emergencies deferred charges. On page 103 of the audit report is the operating, statement of operations for the water and parking utility funds. The water utility fund had an increase of almost $2.3 million in fund balance, whereas parking had a slight decrease of about $250,000 in fund balance. We also undertook another special emergency for parking. Obviously, parking wasn't, was not used much, or nearly as much as during 2020. We had some suggestions to management and a few recommendations. When we first started as the auditor, there were a large number of recommendations, and every year, the village whittles down the number of recommendations. We don't consider these recommendations to be anything more than, than housekeeping, certain things that need to be adjusted or to be prepared. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them at this point.
Questions, Pam? Now it's open to Perrin, I mean.
You had some suggestions about licensing, about the dog licensing and that being communicated to the finance department. Don't we also license cats? Was, was that, all the cats were communicated?
The state report reports it as a dog license trust fund, so it does take cats into.
That was my only question. Cats feel about that?
I'm going with the cats and the dogs.
We're okay with cats and the dogs. Okay, anyone else?
So we have two resolutions in front of council this evening. The first is to accept the audit report that Bud has filed with us and the general comments or recommendations. Council has to individually attest that they read the comments or recommendations and understand the nature of them. The second resolution is a corrective action plan, which I put together, which is a response to each recommendation that Nissabatcha has, has suggested. Implementation has begun already in three of them, and the fourth one will be forthcoming in the next couple of weeks. So I'm confident that I'm going to whittle this down even further from when I started here. So my goal is to get this down to three next year, Bud. Any questions?
No, I think we're good.
I'd really take, like, take the opportunity to thank the village administration for their efforts. They're very helpful. Whenever we had questions, they were very helpful to answer the questions and get us the information that we needed to help us perform efficiently. And we'd like to thank the village for that and recognize their efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're good?
I think you also have an update of financials. Is that correct or no?
I do. I can, rather than, than go through each one, basically, the big difference in the general and the parking is the result of the emergencies that we had to pass during the year to make up for the deficiencies that we had in revenue. Water was solid. They continue to move forward. They have the ability to utilize rate increases based upon their usage. So from a financial standpoint of view, things are solid. We move into a challenging year coming up in '22 in our budget process, which, by the way, we started already. So we will keep track on that and monitor that, but as we stand right now, we are, you know, comparative to the prior year, we're, we're where we should be.
Okay. Anyone questions? All right. We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations again.
Thanks.
Our next item is award professional services for archaeological survey for the Zabriskie Sheddler House. So the plans and specifications for the finishing and planting of the landscape berm at the reference, at the Zabriskie Sheddler site is out for bids. Part of the work entails the installation of a water main and irrigation system to keep the proposed trees planted alive and healthy. That site, as we know, is governed by the State Historic Preservation Office, and the village is obligated to exercise due diligence and care because of that during the excavation for the water main at the site to ensure minimal impact to archaeological potential. We have a proposal from Hunter Research of Trenton, New Jersey, to perform the necessary services. This firm is recommended by Connolly and Hickey, who are historical architects for the Zabriskie Sheddler House. SHPO has also been notified of the village's intention to use this firm during the water main work. It's for an amount not to exceed $8,485, and funding is in the capital account for this project.
Any questions?
Could you let me know when that's going to happen? Because I've never watched an archaeologist at work, and I would kind of like to see this just in case.
Sure, we have to wait first to get the bids in to award the work, and then we'll find out when the work's being done, but sure, we could do that.
Okay, anyone else?
Okay, the next one is awarding change order for tree removals at various locations. We had received bids in July, and it was awarded to Dujett's Tree Experts of Woodland Park, New Jersey. Because of the installation of sidewalks along West Glen Avenue, it's been determined that several trees in several locations will need to be removed. And so therefore, we would like to do a change order in the amount of $4,600.
So, let me just see.
And just so the public knows, this is five trees.
Correct.
Two of which are invasive.
Correct.
Right.
How old are the trees that they're going to?
How old?
Do we know?
I can find out possibly. I don't know. I could ask our arborist to take a look at them.
And they're just, they're in the way?
Correct.
Okay.
Of where the sidewalks will be located. All right, the next one is the release of escort funds for Chestnut Village, located at 150-174 Chestnut Street. They have requested that their escort funds be released. Chris Reddys, our village engineer, has agreed that the cash portion of their performance bond in the amount of $12,046, as well as the work, I'm sorry, as well as the two irrevocable letters of credit that were supplied for the project can be released and are no longer required, again, because this project is complete.
Any one question on that?
Okay. The next one is award renewal of the subscription for Swaget. As you know, Swaget Production Services of Plano, Texas streams and produces the council meetings. It is $1,500 per month, and the maximum amount of meetings for that is 50 meetings annually. So this is to renew it for next year. And it's awarded under, through a TIPS contract, which I, I'm not sure what TIPS stands for, but we'll, we'll spell it out. It's a cooperative purchasing program.
Okay.
I'm in favor of this. I think, I think Swaget has done a good job for us. It's $18,000 a year, which works out to $1,500 a month. And also, I understand that if council changed its mind and decided to go to a hybrid process of public comment, that Zoom could be overlaid with this so that that video could be brought in if we had, if we came up with the money to pay for staffing during that process. So I think it's worth doing.
All right.
The next one is capital money for the tree well project. I think Mayor Newtson, there was a request for additional trees. Is that correct? Tree wells to be done?
Yeah, I think maybe the deputy mayor can speak to that.
Sure, sure.
This is his green, he's the green guy.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, what happened was the, there was additional money that we needed for police coverage to rehab the tree wells, and that wasn't included in the bid. So Shade Tree Commission was kind of wondering, well, you know, do we do less wells or, you know, so? We kind of went back and forth, and I'd like to thank Bob Rooney and the mayor for kind of chipping in because, you know, the original thought was, well, we have about eight or eight and a half thousand dollars left in the original tree planting budget, which everybody knows became the tree cutting budget. So the thought was that we could use about $4,000 from that to cover the police for the work for the few days that it had to go on downtown, and then use the other half of that money for additional wells. I think it was 12 tree wells originally, so if we could get eight out of it, which I think was based on the price, then we'd be able to do 20 tree wells with, with the money that was approved already and with using the money that was left over from the tree planting budget. But money was found elsewhere in, in the budget, I guess, through various appropriations at the end of the year. So there's budget transfers. Some departments spend more money, some departments spend less money. So I'd imagine that through that process, that's where the, the money to fund the police coverage came from. So, you know, using, based on the price that we got, using, I guess, the remaining eight or eight and a half thousand dollars in the tree planting budget, we'd be able to get 24, 23, or 25 tree wells done if that would all, you know, that all be possible.
And I know, as you indicated, Mr. Rooney did find that money, so.
Yeah, so the, the covered, the, the police, the police costs are covered, and I just wanted to say that the Shade Tree Commission, everybody worked so hard. I think it's, it's an amazing group of folks, so thank you.
And Mike, this is going to be done hopefully within the next month or so, I guess?
Yeah, that's, that's the plan. We're trying to get on this as soon as possible.
Before the snow comes.
In, in November.
Okay.
Carolyn's from the Shade Tree Commission. She is, she, she's a Shade Tree Commissioner. She is, is, did I misspeak?
So she's, wait, does she, will she want to say something? Do you want to come, just, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, just come on up a minute, Carol. Come on up. So just tell everyone your name, address, and exactly who you are and why you're speaking in the middle of the meeting, because I don't want anyone to think that there's a reason you're here, and we appreciate your, your work.
Yes, thank you. Carolyn Jacoby, 160, I'm sure, 160 Godwin Avenue. I'm a member of Shade Tree Commission. And following up Councilman Seiden's explanation again, thank you so much for allowing this to go on. Now, I just would like to clarify, because there are really like two projects happening that I asked for use of the remainder of the tree planting budget, which was plus $8,400 was remaining. Thank you, Mayor and Manager, for, Mr. Rooney, for allowing the needed police presence for the planting of the 22 trees going in at the lower end of Ridgewood Avenue. So that money, because originally, we asked for 22, 3, I believe, but there's more. And in addition to the police, there is the necessary watering that must happen now. Initially, in the contract, there'll be one watering at time of planting, but we will need three additional waterings. So we are asking, actually, for, if I'm excluding the police. Now, there'll be another $900 needed for the watering.
So you need another 900 on what you have, after we deducted out the 22. Have the police money in there, you need another, am I understanding that right? You need another 900 for that?
Right. But then that would be covered out of the remainder of the tree planting budget, because originally, that was.
We could take it, you know, out of the 8,000.
Yeah.
Dollars. If we could use that money.
Yeah.
If it's okay to use it for this part of the operation.
To water the trees?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think we should water.
Initially. And moving forward, 2022, the whole issue of tree watering is being taken up in the, in the budget proposals that we will be bringing forth to you. And hopefully, we can do an initial presentation at the December 1st meeting, if we can get on that agenda. It would be terrific to be able to do that. But there are, there are eight tree wells that we've identified where the trees, if the wells are refurbished, that we believe the trees can, can actually thrive. So we don't have to remove them, looking at the whole picture of the, of the CBD. And again, there, there's, that'll be about two days of work. We will need police presence and additional watering following that, that initial watering. We will need three more waterings in those wells. So we are looking at, a total of the eight wells would be $500 plus police time and watering. So we're asking for $6,400 for that project, Mike, not the 4,000. Okay?
Okay.
So, but we still have the money from the 8,000 remaining.
Right, right, right. So you're good.
And if, and if that could be used, then that would be, I just want the clarification and to allow for that. That would be wonderful. Can I just update you on the ash tree removals? Because this is addition to what it was. We've had 40 removed so far, and I hope by December 1st, you'll have the rest removed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you for your work and for your volunteerism. Thank you. Really appreciate.
Yeah, I'll come up at the end, just to make one more comment.
And helping out with the.
Helping out with the.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is under policy, approval of municipal alliance grant application. This is an annual application that provides us with money from the New Jersey Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, and it supplies recreational, social, and educational programs in support of alcohol, drug abuse, and drug abuse awareness. It is a grant in the amount of $4,507.18, and there is a match, 25% in cash from the village, $1,126.80, and an in-kind match of 75% of $3,380.39. Again, this is a wonderful grant that we receive, and I know that our municipal alliance committee does plan educational programs for our residents with it.
Okay. Anyone questions on that?
Okay. The next item is establishing standards for electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging spaces. We're required to update our land use ordinances governing the installation of electric vehicle supply equipment and make ready parking spaces, charging spaces within the village. This is based on Senate Bill 3223 from the 219th legislature. The proposed ordinance is based upon the model ordinance issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. It was discussed at the planning board. Our planner, Mary Ann Booty Carter, also reviewed it. Much of the proposed ordinance is mandated, with no ability to adjust. And again, the village is required to adopt it. The intent of the ordinance is to make it a requirement that electric vehicle and electric vehicle charging spaces are constructed as part of any development in the future. So my understanding is, is the planning board has passed it on to the council to introduce.
Yep.
Obviously, as always, since it's land use, we'll go back to the planning board and then come back to the council. So we'll probably, most likely, adopt it in December.
Anyone have questions on that?
I don't have a question, but, you know, now that I'm looking at it, it's quite different from what I had thought it was going to be. It's not retroactive, and it doesn't affect on-street parking at all. In fact, it's really just for new developments that have their own parking lots.
Right. I don't think you can make this retroactive on, yeah.
And the other side of it is that maybe, that might be coming down the line. This just deals with new development, and I figure that's where they're going to start.
Yeah. And it was a good start.
Yeah.
Okay. The next item is dining corrals. So our dining corrals, I believe, are set to expire November 1st. We could certainly extend them into November if the council decides to do so tonight or till the end of the year. I have Mr. Rooney come up. I know that we looked at possibly charging for square footage. Right now, we're charging per parking space. I know that in some cases, dining corrals are overlapping neighboring retail or restaurant facilities, and perhaps that's not the best idea for those who are being overlapped and, you know, doing without some parking spaces. I know Mayor Newtonson has spoken with some of those types of businesses. I figure, if it's okay with you, we'll go through what Mr. Rooney has to present.
Yeah, why don't we go through that person, and I'll share the other information, so that everyone understands where we're at. So go ahead.
Okay. So after going through many gyrations as to what would be equitable based upon the size of the property, the taxes that were paid, I had a conversation with Bill Gilson last week, and we talked about what the average rate per square foot is going to be going forward in leases that he's aware of. And that goes anywhere between $35 and $40 a square foot. However, that rate includes heated facilities, air conditioning, electricity, everything else. So it's good for interior, it's not good for exterior. So what I did was, I took the properties that use the corrals. I looked at the lot size of the property. I did a calculation based upon the taxes that are paid on the land, and I came up with a tax per square foot. And a tax per square foot, I averaged because there are some inconsistencies, and that came out to be $2,048 a square foot. So every corral space, every parking space, is approximately 160 square feet. So in applying that math to the square footage of the number of the corrals that they have, we would be charging anywhere between $625 to $1,900 a month for using those corral spaces. Now, that's approximately 28% higher than what they're paying now. Now, the other thing that Bill said that they incorporate into their lease structure for commercial entities is based on cash flow. So if we left the corrals intact all year long, and the restaurants only use them eight months out of the year, you can structure your collection to be during those eight months where the periods, they have their most revenue income. And the four months that are down, you either charge them a minimum or zero, and roll that amount into their annual rent. So that's another consideration to sort of ease the pain as to what the cost would be for the use of those parking spaces.
So I just want to add, by way of background here, because I don't want everybody out in the world to think, oh, now we're going after.
I should have let you speak, talk first. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. It's fine. You could just jump right in there with the money. It's fine. But by way of background, one restaurant approached me and asked his desire to make the corral more permanent. And he was willing, he felt that any corrals that are made more permanent would certainly warrant a higher rate per square foot than what they're currently paying, which is, you know, the cost of a parking space. And, but that would mean a commitment on the part of the village to forfeit those spaces for whatever the term of a lease would be. So it wouldn't be something where we would say, oh, yeah, we're going to do this for six months, because if somebody's going to lease this space in, on a more permanent basis, long-term, they would be interested in making certain upgrades, decor and such. However, and I'll get to the next piece of it, we have had some concerns or issues with certain corrals in certain locations. And it does appear that some work better for this. Some are more conducive to this approach. Others are actually impeding the ability of other businesses to thrive and to succeed. So we've had some conversation about that. We've had complaints from several businesses. We've had complaints from some residents on the outskirts of, just on the perimeter of the central business district. And so I think that each, each one of these, in theory, would have to be taken on a case-by-case basis, and, and to see which ones work and which don't, and, and then figure out how to move forward. So the first question is, we're going to, I think we're, did we say December?
I think it was November 1st.
Okay.
So my question is, would, would you be willing to extend it to December 31st with the current arrangement until, oh, for November and December? Because I believe they paid through, or they will be paying through November shortly, right?
They pay a month in advance.
I'm sorry, they, right. So they paid through October. So.
So my recommendation would be to let it go till December 31st. And the reason is that those issues that have popped up, we're already kind of working out those details for the, for the immediate, immediately, to correct what's gone on there. And everybody, hopefully, that, that is resolved. If not, some of them will just have to go away. And that's, there's just no choice. But as far as these kind of negotiations go, I think that we could look at this and maybe have a little bit more detail hammered out. So if everyone's okay with at least going to December 31st, I think that makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
So we'll do it under the same arrangement that we have currently.
I think that's a good idea. And these were, you know, just a reminder, these were implemented because of COVID-19, when people weren't allowed to go in the restaurants. They were down to 25% capacity, or they were shut down, and they were 50% capacity. So it was kind of done quickly, just to fairly compensate the village per space, just to kind of help the businesses, and the restaurants, help the restaurants basically stay alive through the pandemic. So now that the pandemic is, seems to be receding, and businesses, you know, restaurants can be filled up again, now we're going to have to come up with some sort of idea. If we're going to make this permanent, it's got to be fair for everybody, and it's got to be a permanent type of structure and arrangement. Because, again, it was done kind of on the fly in the middle of the pandemic.
Yeah. And we do have one business owner who, he was also willing to help. And I just figured before we had any conversation with that individual, that we should just at least ask if anybody's interested in looking at this in this context, or are we just going to say, you know, the dining corrals should proceed, shouldn't continue on, and we get back to business? Because I know for some, like I said, some of these businesses are very upset because they've been blocked, and there's no parking in the vicinity of their locations, because the parking spaces, you know, look at, those are the parking spaces that actually turn over. So, so why don't we just go till the 31st, and then we'll go from there?
So let me, I just have a question about going forward with permanent. And you said on, take it on a case-by-case basis. Can we do that? Like, is that legal? It's not discriminatory to tell this business, yes, you can have.
What you do, what you do is that you look at it and see what the common threads are between, among all of the different ones that you have. Not everybody's got the same arrangement, same size, or anything like that. So I think when you say take it on a case-by-case basis, you have to consider all the different individual aspects of each one of those. But as you have common threads and common issues that you can bring out, that's how you kind of define your ordinance and define, or whatever way we approach it. That's how you define what that is, and then make your variations from that. And that's what you'd have to do.
Yeah. I think some of them, some of them, just the location is just more conducive. And where, some are in locations where it really has taken away the parking, and it's impacted other businesses. So that's one.
No, I, I get that, but how do you?
The other option is to just say, look, you know, we're not going to continue with this.
Yeah.
Which is, I.
I mean, will the, you know, the restaurants that we say, well, you know, you're not in the, in a good area to do that, you know, they're, they're going to be very unhappy.
Well, they may be unhappy. Like, for instance, and, and I, you know, I, we didn't have any on Ridgewood Ave. We never, we didn't start out. And then I felt that that wasn't fair. I did. I felt it kind of wasn't fair. And I was like, well, why don't we, you know, do something for those folks, too? And, and we did. But there are some issues with the ones on Ridgewood Ave that we're encountering. There were some, I guess, on, I think it's, where's that? Well, anyway, one of them, I actually got stuck in a parking space because the dining corral, there were trucks double and triple parked, and nobody could come around the corner. And, and I couldn't get out of my parking space because another truck blocked me in. And that was a direct result of the dining corral, because the street itself isn't wide enough to accommodate all of that activity. So there were certain locations that it really does work well on a more permanent basis. Other locations, it just doesn't.
Okay. I'm just curious. Has there been any accident? Anybody hit a dining corral yet?
There was just one where it ran into the, the barrier. It did not move the barrier at all. There was no one in the dining corral at the time. But it would have prevented anyone, I mean, it didn't even shift. The barrier didn't shift. So most likely, I, I mean, we don't know, but most likely, someone there, if they were injured, would have been very minor, although they may not have been injured at all. But that's the only one we've experienced so far.
And the one thing I will say is, I did review code. And one of the concerns, one of the issues I was concerned with, and I think the deputy mayor just pointed out, when restaurants are at a 25% capacity, you're 50% capacity, and your other capacity was sitting outside, your restroom facilities still accommodated that 100% of your capacity, because half were inside, half were outside. But by code, when you have outdoor dining, you do not have to have expanded, an expansion on your restroom. So you don't have to accommodate the outdoor dining. So if we were to go down this path, and we said, okay, this is now permanent, then the facilities in the restaurant, the restrooms, don't really accommodate the permanent part of that. And then, I guess, and I guess it's something that we'll have to look at with building and, and the village attorney, as to whether or not, when you make that permanent, is, does that then on your construction code, would that then require the bathroom facilities to accommodate everyone? And I think it's just something we have to look at, because up until this point, if it's just street dining, you don't. But if it's more permanent, it might, may cause a whole different issue.
I'm not up on my bathroom code, but I think I gotta, I think we can certainly look that up pretty quickly.
Yeah, I can, I can actually send it to you like that, because I already have it.
I'm sure you could.
Okay. All right.
I have a question. Bob, aren't they, aren't the restaurants paying now about 250 a month per parking spot?
It's $250 per space per month.
And what you were just mentioning, wasn't it in the 600s per spot?
So someone that's spending $500 might now spend 625.
I see. Okay. You know, I have to recognize that this is steady money for the village when we are having a parking crisis. And, and I appreciate that income. And I also appreciate the attractive quality for, for visitors. It makes our village festive. And, and I think this is something we've learned from, from COVID. It's, it's worth continuing.
To, to where, where it works. I think that that's really the piece, because you, you are on that communication with me on the one. And I actually spoke to one of the business owners. I've spoken to another business owner, and then another business owner. There are folks that aren't happy, because it really is preventing their businesses from utilizing public parking spaces that should be readily accessible. So when your parking is a little bit more in a crunch.
Yeah.
As opposed to one, another location that might have, it, it seems a little bit more, I, what I'm thinking about, I just don't want to give any shout-outs to any businesses downtown, although I do love them.
I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah. So Councilwoman Perrin's a little bit more familiar with the work we've done on this thus far, so she knows exactly what I'm talking about. So, but we can go till the 31st, and we'll hammer out the other details, and see if it works. If it works, if it doesn't, we'll be done. It'll, it's all fine. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Our next item is under operations. The Women Gardeners of Ridgewood has continued to contribute their talents and efforts to a number of community projects. They fund, plant, and maintain the gardens at the Ridgewood Public Library, Habernickel Family Park, the Stable, and Avanna Square along Ridgewood Avenue. They would like to make an additional gift of two benches. would like to make an additional gift of two benches, one at the library and the other in Van Ness Square. The bench at the library would be along the wall as you went to the lobby at the parking lot main entrance. And the bench in Van Ness Square would be along the right side stone wall at the bottom of the staircase, on the corner of North Walnut Street and East Ridgewood Avenue. These are valued at $2,000. If the council's amenable, we will do a resolution to accept this generous donation.
Of course, I'm, we're amenable. Thank you, Women Gardeners of Ridgewood.
And I understand that these benches will match the benches that are already in each of those locations.
And we thank them twice.
Yeah. And, and really, that they're getting down in the dirt and digging, and in addition, donating these benches is pretty remarkable.
Yep.
So, it's wonderful.
It is wonderful. The next item is our review of the best practices inventory. This time of year, we have the best practices inventory, where they ask us various questions about what we do and don't do in local government. We see our state aid is dependent upon at least 15 positive responses to question, 27 questions, 28 questions, maybe. We are in excess of this requirement, so we will receive 100% of our state aid. They also ask us questions that are not scored, which I think may be scored in the future. But I'm glad to say that most of the core competencies that they want us to have, we have. And the very few we don't, we're working on, we have doing so if, if we, if we can do so.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Okay. That's all I have.
That's all you have. And so with that, we will go back to public comment. Not to exceed five minutes per person. Please state your name and address for the record.
Rorick Hallaby, 1 Franklin Avenue. As far as Swaggit, in my humble opinion, it's the only decent thing we have on our website, which is just sad, sad. Swaggit is an excellent, excellent part of the website. I urge you to keep it. Now, for the record, using my, the Oprah machine on my iPad, I have already encumbered Ms. Young with a request to get Bob Rooney's report. For three years, I've been asking for that. A battle-hardened CFO like Bob Rooney probably prepared that report in his sleep. Why didn't we have that three years ago, two years ago, when millions of dollars have been, gone into Shadler? And Shadler, after six years, looks like a battle site, is pathetic. Now, when it comes to misinformation versus information, the reason we have so much misinformation is because we do not have enough information. For instance, the budget, which is an extremely difficult subject to understand. I begged you, more than once, to have Bob Rooney have public meetings, have town halls where he could explain the budget. Now, I hate to sound rude, I hate to sound arrogant. I'm willing to bet my last dollar that none of you really understands the budget. I'm sorry. So for someone to misunderstand the budget isn't such a sin. Now, one last thing. I attended the, the meeting with the master plan of the planning committee, and I was most unimpressed, really, really unimpressed. Here, we've gone at it for three years, and these consultants came up with points that they could have come up with a month after starting their work. Also, I was most unimpressed by the planning board. One person asked some good questions. Everybody else just sat there like puppets waiting to be having their strings pulled. It was pathetic. I expected more questions, more debate, being, putting people on the spot. The only person that was talking was Ms. Knutson, and she absolutely, 80% of the talk was by her. Everybody else was silent. And frankly, I again, I urge you and Ms. Reynolds to sit at the side and not center stage. Let Joel run the meeting. So when it comes to misinformation, I can only think of Trump when he speaks about fake news. I can only think of Kellyanne Conway when she talks about alternative facts. So many things are flying around the place, because we have no access to information. We have no access. People are so proud of how transparent we are, this village council, as far as I'm concerned. And I have no axa grind. I'm 81 years old. I should be watching TV. I love this village. I love this village. And it kills me to see this village go downhill the way it has. Okay? So it is really, really sad when I see this happening. Really, really sad. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, if I had interrupted the meeting, I would have been called out of order. And plus, again, let me just say, either you do not respond to anyone, or you do respond to anyone, then you should respond to everyone. So when I have a question, I demand that it be answered, because you already have answered questions. Just because people are nice to you, doesn't mean I have to be nice to you to have my answers questions, my questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Upton, 172 West Glen Avenue. I would initially like to comment that, I know it's been said before, but sitting out here, and in spite of what my wife tells me, I'm not going deaf, but it's very difficult to hear what you're saying, particularly when you tend to turn and have conversations with one another. So I say this because I wasn't too clear on some of the comments that Councilwoman Reynolds made about the Citizen Safety Committee. But if I understand correctly, she said that some people came and talked about West Glen sidewalks to the committee, and either separately or as a result of that, that the grass strip has been eliminated from the plan now. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe so.
So I just wanted to comment, I don't know how many residents came to talk to Citizen Safety, but based on the plan that Chris Rudishauser distributed, there are 33 residents whose properties will be directly affected, and three others who are in the section where the work will be done. So there's about 36 residents affected. And I feel like something like the grass strip being changed shouldn't be done as a result of just one or two people speaking. It, you know, and again, I'm renewing my concern that there really hasn't been an outreach to the residents as a whole. The design of the plan was put together by the engineering department, who address engineering issues. The Citizen Safety Committee probably addresses safety issues. But I don't know if there has been an overall look at the aesthetics of the plan. The grass strip would be part of the aesthetics. And also, the plans for the retaining walls that are going to be built. I'm concerned that the retaining walls, if they're all the same, because Chris is talking about using the same material for all the houses, it's gonna look a little bit military in appearance. So again, I just renew my comment. I had been hoping that maybe one of the other residents would initiate a discussion, because I feel like one should be, should take place within the village. But failing that, you know, we'll maybe get something organized, or we'll have to, we'll have to manage individual residents talking to Chris, as, as he has said he will do. So thank you very much.
Carolyn Jacoby, 160 Godwin Avenue. I just want to clarify and make sure we're all on the same page on, of what will be happening for the remainder of this year with the trees. At the last meeting when I spoke, and the mayor asked about when work will be done, and the varieties of trees. So with the 22 tree wells, I am ever hopeful that work will be completed before Thanksgiving, if not earlier, which is terrific. And the varieties that we are putting in are Trident Maple, Valley Forge Elm, that's the elm that we put in at Greddon when the Old Sycamore had it come down, actually, the London Plain. So the Valley Forge Elm, Swamp White Oaks, which are really terrific, terrific workhorse oaks, Honey Locust, the Honey Locust, we have wonderful ones that remain by the movie theater and Verizon. They offer a beautiful dappled shade during the summer. They're the last of the really big trees that we have downtown. We'll put some Honey Locust and Sycamore. So we have different varieties of trees going down there. And moving forward, that's, that's phase one. Phase two for 2022, we'll present a more robust plan for what will happen. So the ash trees are being eliminated, the, the 90 that were initially identified. Moving forward again, the speed, which, which these ashes are dying, has been very disturbing. So next year, we do not in fact know how many will be, become readily hazardous and must be removed. And we'll have to deal with that then. And the, those eight tree wells, the work will not be able to be done this fall. We've deferred that to the, the spring. So again, with the monies, I just want to confirm that we could move that into early spring to do that. And one last point of our tree inventory, we completed about 85% of the Ridgewood streets. We did not, we were not able to go on to the county roads. We have about 15% of our streets left that we do not have inventory for. And we're gonna be asking for, which shouldn't take too much money to complete, maybe $10,000 or $15,000 to get that. And I think it's really gonna be critical, so we can identify what ashes are on there. And we know. And also, because perhaps we could get a partner with the county to do some of the removal, the onus wouldn't be completely on us, because they are county roads. But just to keep that in mind. And again, thank you all for the support. And we're looking forward to a beautifully revitalized Central Business District moving forward.
Ms. Jacoby, I do have a question.
Please.
The eight tree wells that you, that you mentioned that could be rehabilitated, are they still, where are they?
They're in different locations.
Okay, so they're not in the same-
No, it has nothing to do with the, the lower end. They're on Chestnut, one or two are on Franklin, and on Ridgewood Avenue, but the, the upper end of that. So we are, we are hoping, I was hoping to get it done in the fall, so that we could see some growth in the spring. But we will know if it's done early spring. By, by midsummer, we should see that these trees could be viable, and it would be terrific to be able to keep what, what we can. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So I just want to follow up with what Bob had said earlier.
Oh, just name and address again, Al, sorry.
Alex Blake, 259 West Glen Avenue. So just following up what was said earlier, there's been a complete lack of communication between Chris at the engineering department and everybody living on West Glen Avenue. He doesn't respond to emails, doesn't respond to phone calls, any questions, any timelines, complete lack of communication. It's not right. It's unprofessional. That's someone representing you guys as a village. Frankly, I'd be fired already in my job if that was my form of communication. Period. It's not right. And I want you guys all to be aware of that. And I want you to hold that person accountable. Everybody on the street, 20 people that have signed a piece of paper that have a problem with him and the form of communication, and how he's handled everything. And again, like what Bob had said, there's all these design issues that everybody living on that street, you know, retaining walls, everything. Nobody's been provided any communication, input, nothing. It's like, here it is. This is what's gonna be done. We're gonna tear your yard up and do this. Don't care what you think. That's their house. That's their property. They should be allowed to communicate and actually have a mutual understanding of what they would like to do, so that they love their yard, they love their house. Do you want someone to come tear up your yard and tell you what retaining wall they're gonna put in? Probably not. And again, like I said to Mr. Rogers over there, legally, I'm pretty sure you can't just come over here, give me a paper, and within 15 days, sorry, this is what we're gonna come and do, give you notification this late of what we're gonna do to your property. Everything is rushed. They want to get it done before winter time. I'm not really too sure why they want to rush to get something done within a month, instead of delaying things, letting people that live in the community provide their communication of what they want, and actually let the town do what the people living on that street want, instead of rushing this and just pushing it through, just because someone needs to check a box and spend the money? I don't know what it is. I don't know what the agenda is, because nobody is communicating with us. And then, besides this communication, the other stuff Heather was talking about, I'm fairly certain you probably want more than one bid on a project to spend money. But that's me. I, I think that's bad business to not have like, three bids, and actually have three competitive bids before you make a choice. But anyway.
Thank you, Alex. Okay. If no other public comments, I'm going to close that. And I'm just gonna say a couple of things. In terms of the sidewalks along West Glen, I think we've been working on this for a pretty long time. So I'm not sure where the breakdown in communication is. But as a suggestion, as a suggestion, okay, as a suggestion, maybe we need to get all of our documents compiled, put them up onto the, in the project folder on the village website, send that information to all the neighbors as quickly as possible. And this way, everyone understands, because, I mean, in fairness, I visited, you know, I, I went up and I realized how close the houses are to the road, and then what was going to happen if you had a four-foot strip, and then the sidewalk, and everything else. You may as well have just stopped in and had dinner, right? It was, that's how close everything was. So I, you know, all of these little things about different areas and different streets and neighborhoods impact how we proceed on projects, or proceed with projects. So maybe we just need to get everything organized and show everyone, and this way Bob knows, because you've been following this for, for quite some time. And so obviously, you've known about it. So I think we just have to all get on the same page, and everyone understands what we're doing. So we'll look to get that done. And I just wanted to speak about the two things, that someone called out during a meeting, somebody's new to the meeting, they're not really familiar with the procedures, and we're not looking to boot residents out of the meeting, because they, they aren't unfamiliar. I think we want to be understanding and welcoming, and allow people to participate. Sometimes it's just, you know, somebody's unfamiliar with the process. And finally, I'm going to talk about the planning board. The planning board has done an amazing job with this. And I am so proud of not just the planning board, the, well, the planning board, the members of the- members of the community that have been engaged. And it is somewhat of a repetitive process because you are getting the same information and refining it down to a document. So it is a little repetitive, but I couldn't be more proud of the members of our planning board who are volunteers. They are volunteers. And the planning board, the master plan committee and the visioning committee have worked tirelessly. And to be put in the crosshairs of a complaint as volunteers is just at some point, it's just not right. They are volunteers. They show up, they work hard, and we should be proud and grateful. So that's all I have to say. With that, I guess we'll take a motion to go into closed session, a resolution to go into closed session, whatever it is.
Be it resolved by the village council of the village of Ridgewood, that the village council meet in closed session on October 27, 2021, at 7:30 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the matter on the agenda can be reached. And that said closed session be held in the caucus room of the Ridgewood Village Hall, 131 North Maple Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey. And be it further resolved that the matters to be discussed in closed session are limited to personnel matters to include management and non-union salary ordinances, appointments to boards and committees, police department, legal matters to include town garage and contract negotiation to include lease for rental of 1057 Hillcrest. These matters are allowable under NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12 at SEC. And be it further resolved that the minutes of this meeting shall be made available to the general public when such matters have been deemed completed by resolution of the village council. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone out there. Good night. Good night.